Good evening. Welcome to the August 14th Lebanon City Council Meeting. Our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move on to the roll call members. Mark Kerkel, roll please.
Mike Kincaid, he's absent this evening. Keith Campbell.
Here.
Morris Jones.
Here.
Dick Robertson.
Here.
John Copeland.
Here.
Brent Wheat.
Here.
Sierra Messenger.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, move on to the approval of the minutes for our previous meeting. Are there any changes to the minutes? We entertain a motion to approve the minutes?
I'm making a motion. We approve the minutes.
Motion approves. There are a second?
Second.
Second from Morris. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. Minutes are approved. Alright, we'll move on. Actually, can I get consent from council to take the agenda out of order? Consent?
Yes.
Okay. Move on to new business. First item up will be food and beverage requests from the Boone County Historical Society for Lincoln Days. Jane Hammack and John, is this you? Or have Jane go first.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Like you said, I am Jane Hammack and I'm representing the Boone County Historical Society. There is a poster at your desk talking about this year's Lincoln's Lebanon. Our premise is that in February 11th of 1861, on his way to his inauguration, newly-elected President Lincoln stopped in Boone County in Lebanon, right here at the railroad crossing, and gave a speech from the back of the car. Our premise is, what if he'd gotten off that train car and headed north to the new Boone County Agriculture Society fairgrounds out in Northwood, had a racetrack, and we all know Lincoln loved horses? What if he'd gone out there and spent the day with his constituents and just talked to them? So we do have a Lincoln impersonator who comes that day. He's incredible. He stays in character all day. If you walk up to him with your cellphone, he's saying, "What's that odd thing you have in your hand?" I mean, it's almost creepy. He's so in character. We have a full reenactment of a Civil War camp. We do do a battle. There are two battles, Saturday and Sunday at 2:00. We do tell Uland Country Club, because Ken, as you know, the golfers do not like when the cannons go off, so we always warn them. We have requested $1,500 in the food and beverage. In reality, we're only getting $840 of that because we do pay Memorial Park $660 to rent the park for the weekend. We do clean the park. They give us garbage bags and toilet paper. We clean up our own garbage. We restock the Johns. We clean up the shelter house, and we clean up her cabin. We use local vendors. This year, we're using the 1910 Vault food truck to come and serve food for meals. We have local breads, jams, pottery, persimmon pulp, all from local vendors for sale at the event. We use hotels for our reenactors. We do give Lincoln, Grant, and Lee hotel rooms because we don't think they should be living in tents for the weekend. And a lot of the reenactors do use the local restaurants on Friday and Saturday nights if either the weather's bad or a lot of them have driven a long way and they just want a real meal instead of another campfire meal. We also get our insurance from a local insurance adjuster here in town. This is a free event. It's one of the few free historical events around anymore. We do inform the schools so that they can tell the children. We've had some of the history teachers before. Like, they tell the kids they have to have a picture with Lincoln or a picture with Lee or Grant. Lee, Lincoln, and Grant will have debates all weekend. The soldiers after the battle will drag a soldier off the field who has been wounded. He will subsequently die because the doctor cannot heal his wounds, and then we do have a full military funeral for him. We have a priest and a minister on the grounds all weekend, and we do have a 10:00 on Sunday church service for which we tell the local churches that if they'd like to skip their services, they could come out to the park and have church services with us. And sometimes the local priest, our priest, does show up at St. Joe and kind of freaks them out when there's an 1864 priest sitting in the back of St. Joe's. We are a total volunteer group. None of us get any wages for this. We all just show up and do it on our own. And I know that Lebanon is one of the few cities that does use their food and beverage to help nonprofits like us, the barbecue in the back of the '50s, and I do appreciate all the work and the money that you do give us to help support this event. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them for you.
Thank you, Jane. Any questions for Jane from the council? John?
Yes, Jane attended our meeting on July 20th and made a presentation for Lincoln Days. Members that night was myself, Morris Jones, and Brent Wheat. She went, basically took all my notes that I had taken that night and went over them real quick. I will go over a couple of quick things. As she said, there's no charge for the attendees. The reenactors, she went from anywhere from 100 to maybe 200 people could be a reenactor for the event. Volunteers, they had 10. They need more. And the funds that they're requesting was for the general fund to just go through costs to run the event for those two days. And with that, our committee made a recommendation, is making a recommendation tonight, for $1,500.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I was just going to add that, as always, my beloved bride is Secretary of the Historical Society, so-
Treasurer.
Treasurer, sorry. I will abstain from the vote, but I wholly support this event, and that has nothing to do with the fact that I got to fire a cannon last year, which is a life-changing event for a guy like me. But anyway, it's one of those things that I really encourage folks to make time to come see, especially bring kids out. They can really learn a lot about history. These folks stay in character. They'll talk to you at their tent, at the campfire. Plus, you can see the skirmish. It's a really cool event.
Any further discussion? John, you want to make a motion?
I make a motion for $1,500 for the Lincoln Days event for this year.
We have a motion for $1,500 funding. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Sierra. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. Is it abstaining?
Thank you. I hope to see you on the 30th.
Okay. Thank you, Jane. Next will be another food and beverage request for the Back to the '50s Festival. Carmen?
She's taller than I am. Good evening. Carmen Ottinger, Back to the '50s Festival. And Jane says a lot of the things that we are about, too, only we're in the '50s. We're all volunteer, and we met the other evening. We, too, are requesting the $1,500 for our festival. It covers our entertainment tent facilities. And you, I gave several of you a list of our events for the day. We are a one-day event this year. We backed off on our Friday night for a few reasons. Volunteers are hard to come by these years, and also we're up against Friday Night Football. But to let you know that we are returning next year to our Friday night schedule, so just to let you know, we lost a few events by going to the one-day event, but they'll all be back next year. We are all volunteered also, and no one makes any kind of salary from that. We are, again, needing more volunteers. That's, in this day and life, all festivals and events are always looking for volunteers, so check the contact page on our website, sponsorships and donations, door prizes. One of the new things this year, we've been chosen by Fox 59 Indy, I think it's called Indy Now. It happens in the morning as a live show. They have contacted us to be a part of that event. I think we're going to be on the 5th or 6th of September. I'm waiting for the gentleman. We've been paying email tag to find out exactly what all we're going to be doing with some food events, perhaps a couple of cars at the studio. Like I said, we've been paying phone ta- or email tag. He's been on vacation, so I'm waiting for exactly what he wants us to bring for that show. So I'm really excited to find out what we're going to be doing. I think that's a live show. I don't think it's taped ahead. Not sure. But we've been selected as one of their festivals to highlight, so more on that to come. But we've gotten several, our showcase entertainment is back. And the other highlight is we're having the Colts in motion trailer. That's an interactive activity trailer, and they will be there all day Saturday. We have petitioned for that from the Colts probably five years, and the only way you get that is it's not a home game on Sunday. And so that weekend, the home game is away, so we are going to have the Colts trailer and some of their people. I don't know what mascot will be there, if we have a mascot, or just what all. I have seen film footage on it by going to the Festival Association. They promo it, and so, like I said, I've petitioned for it for about five years, and it's being sponsored by the CBB. So that's, I'm waiting for details on its arrival time. I know where we're going to have it parked, so I'm anxious for it to be there, for you guys to all come and see that and go through it. It's sort of like before, we had a trailer before that had, it was Indiana History. This'll be Colts, sports, things, and go in and, I don't know what all you do, but it's interactive, so I'm anxious for you to all come and see that. It should be fun. So that's one of the new highlights for this year. We'll have vendors and the car show Saturday as usual. We had 225 entries last year. You never know what to expect. We've already got 36 signed up. That's a pre-entry, and so they just start coming that morning, and we get them all signed up, get them lined up, and we're there. So we're excited for that. Terry Lee Rockaboogie will be back this year, and that's always a draw. He was at the fair. They kind of had a small rain shower that night, but they still drew a crowd, and Terry Lee will be there. Again, he's at 5:30, so you can't miss him. He is a mover and a shaker. So volunteers, I'm accepting sponsorships if any of you are interested, and I think that's my spiel.
Hey, Carmen. John?
Carmen made it to the August 7th Food and Beverage Committee meeting. The date of the event is September 16th. It goes from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. It's a one-day event this year. The location's going to be at the 4H Grounds. The members this year for our food and beverage was myself, Morris Jones, and Sierra Messenger. Some of the things was, they talked about they're going to have bands there this year. They're going to have Talent Factory this year. They're going to have the Elvis impersonator this year. She also discussed having six different types of food vendors there this year. She also discussed the Fox 59 program, and the funds that they were asking for was going to help with the entertainment tent this year for the event. And with that, the Food and Beverage Committee has made a recommendation since it's a one-day event for $1,000, and that would be our motion for tonight.
motions or second?
Second.
Motion second for discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Disposed. That is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carmen. Okay, I'll return to our regular scheduled agenda then. First up will be ordinance 2023-11, Economic Development Rider Ordinance. This is on second reading. Jeff Jacob?
Good evening, council. As you recall, last time I was in front of you, we presented the Economic Development Rider. It's a program with IMPA, who is the city's elect- excuse me, their co-op wholesale power provider. And this program, in summary, is a continuation of an ongoing program that in order for large power providers to take advantage of, which is defined under their program as 1 megawatt or more, we need to amend our current ordinance to stay in line with the, with IMPA's program. The program, in essence, discounts over a five-year period the power consumption cost for large power providers that bring in excess of $1 million of new construction to the city. I'm happy to answer any questions. I think that you've been provided the copy of the ordinance. It is fairly in line with what we currently have in place, but in order to continue to take advantage of the program, we need to amend, amend to fall in line with IMPA's terms, which place a $1 million cap on the total savings. And that would, as we were last here, I believe was asked a question whether or not that would impact any of our current users, and it would not. So happy to answer any questions.
Thanks for the recap. Jeff, any questions for Jeff from the council? Rob, can you read the ordinance second reading, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, ordinance 2023-11, again, is an ordinance that repeals and replaces the electric utility economic development rider established by the municipal electric utility. Whereas the utility is a member of the Indiana Municipal Power Agency, it adopted its economic development rider, which is, again, a rate incentive schedule developed in order to encourage large power users to expand and create new operations within the community. On February 2018, this council previously adopted the ED rider bypassing ordinance 2018-02. Since the adoption, again, as Mr. Jacob indicated, IMPA's recently revised its CD program, and the utility board reviewed and recommends the adoption of this ordinance in order to amend the economic development rider in conformance with IMPA's ED rider recently revised, and all that's attached is Exhibit A. After conducting a public hearing, this council determined that the current ED rider ordinance 2018-02 should be repealed and amended in order to make conforming changes for qualifying customers. Therefore, this council finds that ordinance 2018-02 is repealed and of no further effect. The economic development rider attached as Exhibit A is adopted by this council, subject to the subsequent approval by the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission. There is 0% difference in the rates and charges between property located outside the corporate boundaries of the city as compared to property located within the boundaries, and the provisions of this ordinance shall take effect upon approval by the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission and its adoption.
Thank you, Rob. Ordinance is ready on the second reading. Further discussion, comments from council? Any public comment concerning ordinance 2023-11? With that, we entertain a motion?
Just real quick, I'm going to abstain from voting on this since my husband does work for IMPA, and he is the representative for our district, so just going to abstain from voting on this, so.
Thank you, Sarah. Sierra? Okay.
I move we approve ordinance 2023-11.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Sorry.
Second from Morris. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. Is it abstaining?
Aye.
Yep. That ordinance has been passed. Thank you, council. Alright, next up will be ordinance 2023-13. Council considered the LEAP Innovation District Planned Unit Development. Ben?
Good evening, council. I'll give you a real quick recap here of the process, and then we have had a couple of minor amendments to the document itself that I'll just quick run through for you. So I wake the computer up, and then I, we have just a quick recap presentation from our consulting team, since we obviously had a very extensive presentation last time. So just real quickly, just a quick recap, this is second reading of the LEAP PUD ordinance. We started that process to develop this about four months ago, and in terms of the public process, let me pull my calendar up so I get the correct dates for you. We did introduce it, an introductory presentation at the Plan Commission meeting in June. That was on June 20th. And then on June 29th, we did hold a public open house and invited anyone from the public to come and provide comment on the information we had available at that time. Then at the July 17th Plan Commission meeting, we did request a recommendation from the Plan Commission that night and had a full presentation like you received last, last meeting. At that, that meeting, again, a very detailed 45-minute presentation of the information, and then get a unanimous positive recommendation on the PUD ordinance at that time. It was, the ordinance then was introduced with, again, an extensive presentation at the council's last meeting. That was on July 24th, and now we're here on August 14th for the second reading. And just, I mentioned, there have been a couple of amendments to that ordinance since the meeting last time, and I believe our consultant just did one last final audit to make sure all the tables referenced and sections were referenced correctly throughout the document. They found a couple of places where, you know, when things moved around, they forgot to fix a reference somewhere. So I'll just quick read through those. Table 5.1, one of the references did not include the correct section, so they had to include the, as were correct sections, for the internal residential green belt, Section 7.3. And in that same table, there was another reference. I need to make sure that the, generally found in Section 7, not specifically 7.3. So again, 7.3 was changed to a 7. And then in Section 5.6, there was, there was one, it said Exhibit F, and it meant, it's supposed to say Exhibit G, so that was changed. Section 5.8, again, Exhibit F was changed to Exhibit G. Section 510B, there was just a grammar error, deleted a double period. 510C, there was a misspelled word. It said O-O-R-S, and that was meant to say doors, so that was changed. Section 512C, again, there was a reference, incorrect reference to Section 7.3, and that was changed to Section 7. Section 6.3B2, there was a reference to 7.4G, and that's supposed to be 7.5G, so that was, change was made. And then in Section 13.3F2, Paragraph B was changed to read Paragraph 13, 13.3F1. So again, we're just, just really just some cleanup to some references throughout the documents where it made one reference that had been changed at some point during the various iterations of this draft that were put up. So we just ask for you tonight, in terms of your consideration, is, is for the council to accept those changes, and then, and then any potential adoption of the ordinance would be subject to those, to those changes. So we'd actually need two, two motions from the council, one to accept the changes, and one to adopt the, the amended ordinance. That's really all I have. Just, I wanted to do just a quick recap of the process and just of those quick updates, and I'll turn it over to the consulting team just to provide a few more comments for you before there's a discussion.
Before we go on, as you can tell, all of those were essentially just corrections. Is council willing to accept those, essentially accept those corrections now, this time? So this is not, again, not a motion to adopt. This is just a motion to amend the ordinance reflecting those corrections-
It's actually just Scrivener's errors.
Yeah. Is it fair? So I have a motion to correct the, amend the ordinance with those corrections? Motion is there a second?
Second.
Second from Dick, on favor of just amending the corrections. Say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. Okay, the ordinance has now been amended. Scott. We can talk on the corrected ordinance now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Scott Alexander from TAF Law. I represent the IEDC. Our intent is not to go through the 45-minute presentation that you were blessed with last session, but I will just reference a couple of quick points for context on what we're here today for. Number one, how much land would be subject to the planned unit development? About 6,100 acres. That consists of annexation areas 1 and 2 that have previously been brought into the city of Lebanon, and those lands are controlled by the IEDC, either through contract or IEDC already owns. It does not include the Lebanon property. That has already been zoned. That is not subject to the planned unit development. Second, why do we need a PUD? Why are we here? As we indicated last session, we want to provide certainty and standards for the city, for nearby residents, and for the end users regarding the various types of anticipated uses. All of that is key to get to, really, first base with respect to these large, multi-billion dollar facilities. They're, they're not going to enter into negotiations unless they have that certainty, and that's why we're here today. I'm going to introduce Aaron Kowalski from MKSK. Again, for context, IEDC hired MKSK because of their expertise in these types of very large planned unit developments across the country. We asked them to look and draw on that experience across the country to put together the presentation that you saw last week and the ordinance. Aaron?
Good evening. This is a red presentation. Do you have another one? Sorry. One moment, please.
I may have more than one on my-
If not, I've got the paper.
It's this one.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of council, members of the public. Thanks for having us today. So I'll be brief, but figured a small recap would be helpful. So the ordinance, what's here for review today, as Scott mentioned, as Ben mentioned, we've gone through a pretty exhaustive drafting and review process, as well as legal process here. We've had quite a bit of opportunity for public input. We've addressed a lot of those questions, to the best extent possible. So an overview of what we have in this very small seven-slide deck is an outline, concept plan, and some discussion of road classifications. So the ordinance itself, what's before you today for consideration. So applicability of the ordinance, definitions, rules of construction, general use regulations, including permitted, prohibited uses. If you recall, there are certain prohibited uses that the IEDC wants expressly prohibited, as well as other uses that are permitted or silent or conditional in nature. Development standards that are very robust, including building height, setback, construction requirements, anti-monotony requirements, and architectural requirements. Parking standards by use, accessibility, traffic impact, and additional guidelines. Landscaping, pretty extensive standards there, dealing with the site themselves, parking lots, roadway green belts, buffers, and screening walls and fences. Signage standards that would be applicable to this district. Lighting standards, if you recall, those are the standards that are specialized to reduce light pollution. Subdivision of land, stormwater management, again, very innovative standards there to try to manage stormwater in the most sustainable way possible. Declarations of covenants, owners' associations, administrations, and enforcement right-of-way, and annexation. And then there's a number of supporting districts, if you all recall, a couple hundred pages worth, including the legal description, the boundaries, declarations, the concept planned land use table, parking, design guidelines that are very graphic in nature, and stormwater code and technical manual. The concept plan before you today has not changed since we've discussed this prior. Again, this, this district, this is a concept plan, really providing a guidance for future land use in this area and how the site may develop over time. The three colors that are here, as a reminder, the light purple is advanced manufacturing. The dark purple would be the larger mega sites, and the yellow or orange color would be what is intended for a future mixed-use district, which would include residential development. That would be the only district within this overall PUD that would include residential, the advanced manufacturing, and mega site would be employment. As far as roads are concerned, you can see a proposed network here with a number of different road classifications, including major corridors, truck routes, minor truck routes, urban truck routes, minor roads, a mixed-use boulevard, the interstate, and trails. There's a number of road types that have been included in this ordinance, as you recall. So as roads are developed over time, this will be a standard within the document for how those roads are developed. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And I know we had a long presentation last time. Had some time to ruminate on, actually, more than usual, with an extra week in there. So any questions for Aaron or for Scott from the council this time? Okay. We will have public comment. So if you have any public comment, thoughts on this ordinance, please step forward. Please keep comments about three minutes. State-
One question. Could you pull that map back up? I couldn't see the color.
Sure. Can we go back to the map, please?
Not, not for that one. The one you just had, that was just up there, the roads.
The road.
Yeah, that one right there. So that was all the way over to 500 now. Is that-
This is the same map that was-
It's the same one. So nothing has changed for the other. Okay.
Again, we'll have public comment if you have, for three minutes, if you want to state your name for the record. So if you, anyone wants to comment on this, please step forward. Go from there. Seeing none? Yeah. Rob, can you read the ordinance, please?
Thank you, Mayor, council. Ordinance 2023-13 is-
Ordinance 2023-13 is an ordinance establishing the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District.
I didn't understand what we were doing here.
Jody Stewart, 4548 West, or 4548 West, 50 South. I've seen many of you before. I'd like to have the zoning map put back up, if I could. Yeah, thank you. So this is the concept that's being proposed tonight. I want everyone to look at this. That's a lot of land. A lot of land. My husband and I weren't included in any of the earlier meetings about this, and I'm talking about after the land was annexed, and the meeting that took place that same night to introduce the LEAP district. Now, my property sits adjacent to the property that is being annexed on 50 South. I know this is all about speed. This is the new way, speed, let's get this done. But I don't think speed allows you to not follow your rules and your laws of your community and of this city. And I've discussed this with Ben numerous times, and I'm assuming that all of you probably were made aware of that. Were you made aware of that, Mr. Mayor, of my emails with Ben?
I've heard of this.
About your certification notices, about your signage? Were you made aware of those emails?
And the state law was followed.
I'm sorry?
The laws that we follow, our rules that you're talking about, they were all followed.
Okay. So this is a big project for this community. There are a lot of people out there that had no idea that this was going on. There was no signage anywhere. I'm surprised that LEAP doesn't put some signage out there, letting people know this is being considered for a LEAP project. Now, like I said, we weren't included in any of those meetings, so I had the chance. I've taken the opportunity, and I hope that everyone on this board has taken the opportunity to do their due diligence. I've watched all the previous meetings, every single one of them, and Brent Wheat, I believe you said, money we don't receive is not money lost. Keith Campbell, are there more surprises coming? Yes, there will be more surprises coming as soon as you guys adopt this.
That's three minutes, ma'am.
No.
It's three minutes.
This is not free money. The Indiana taxpayers are going to pay for this. And you keep saying that during a lot of meetings. This is free money, this is free money. It's not. I'd like to know who worked on this comprehensive plan? Who was responsible for putting this plan, this concept plan, together? Ben?
I'll answer it after you're done.
Okay. Well, I hope the proper people were on that. I hope that you're following the rules when it comes to that. Your job up here tonight is to do due diligence for your community. That includes the city, and that includes the rural. There have been, there's been a lot...
Four minutes, ma'am.
There's been a lot of people that have attended those meetings, and then there's been a lot of interesting things that I saw come out of them. I believe we had a planning commissioner that resigned, and then I saw that same planning commissioner up here telling people why this was a bad idea.
And the timer's three minutes.
This land has been annexed, it's in the city. You guys are going to make the taxes on it. This is one opportunity that has been presented to you as something that you can do, because it's free money, right, Mr. Mayor? It's free money. Well, I'm going to tell you what happens. One thing I've already learned is you're going to have to hire some more people. Guess who's going to benefit from that? Your salaries are going to go up. Ben, I think you get two bites, is what I heard. So...
Five minutes, ma'am.
Two bites. So you, you're going to make a little bit more money. So yeah, there's going to be, people come in here wanting amendments for salary increases. You already see what's going on with what you've already done. Oh, we need more money for this. Oh, I misappropriated this, and now I need more money for this. Keith, are there any more surprises coming? Yeah, there's going to be a lot of surprises coming, a lot of money that's going to go out from this city to support this. You guys have the opportunity tonight to reject this. That money's still going to be there. Or you have the right right now to say, no, we don't want this the way it is. That's an awful lot of megasite, and once the rezoning process happens, and they come in here and they start rezoning, what are they going to do? They're going to probably take the megasite, clear it up to...
Ma'am, six minutes. You're doubled the limit of the time limit.
I understand that. I'm talking to the people. I'm talking to my elected officials.
Yeah, and there's, this is a, I'm letting people speak on it, right? The set was for three minutes, and you're at six. Okay, so...
Is anybody else waiting in line? No.
To get this point across.
You talked about following rules.
Also, our water, yes, our water, which is an issue. It is a resource, and it's a resource for everyone. You guys are going to be taking millions of gallons of water a day from the wall patch, and you don't even know if you can do it. So why did we have to speed this through? You guys have stacked meetings on top of meetings. Things get missed when you do that, I just want you to know, and I will. If this passes, I will be at every zoning meeting. And oh, by the way, you're going to have to get a hearing officer, because Ben's going to be so busy that he's not going to have time for this. So guess what's going to happen?
Ma'am, you have seven minutes.
Check, 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 it's going through.
Aye.
This negatively affects me because, for some reason, you've bought houses all on my, all on my road. You jumped over me, and then you're putting me in another area that can be, is sold in being rezoned. So yes, thank you for letting me speak my mind. I hope you all did due diligence, do due diligence tonight for your community. The city is not going to be affected by this. It's going to be your rural folk, and farm land is pretty precious right now for the United States. Just remember that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Rob, can you go back to reading the ordinance, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Council Ordinance 2023-13 again establishes the LEAP Lebanon Innovation Plan Unit Development District. This council has previously adopted ordinance 07-16, which is defined in this ordinance as the Indiana Unified Development Ordinance, or the UDO. Section 5 of the UDO provides for the establishment of a planned unit development district, or a PUD district, in accordance with Indiana Code. The Indiana Economic Development Corporation, or IEDC, represents the state in identification and promotion of potential economic development sites. Over the last several months and after discussions with industry leaders, the IEDC identified an area in Boone County as a strategic location for growth and the potential establishment of a large-scale research and innovation park. The strategic area comprised of approximately 9,000 acres is identified as LEAP Lebanon Innovation and Research District, or Project LEAP area, with LEAP being short for limitless exploration at advanced pace. As a result of the Project LEAP's efforts, approximately 600 acres in the LEAP area has been purchased by Eli Lilly and Company. The combined capital investment for these facilities, the Lilly Project area, is anticipated to exceed $3.5 billion. Work on the Lilly Project has already commenced. The IEDC has continued to receive significant interest from the exact types of innovation users that are being targeted. In order to better facilitate and coordinate the development of the remaining property in the Project LEAP area, the IEDC submitted an application to the City of Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission, seeking the adoption of the LEAP Lebanon Innovation PUD District, for certain real estate as described in Exhibit A. Within, with the LEAP district perimeter, which is also described in Exhibit B. The IEDC's application is consistent with the provisions of the zoning ordinance and the PUD statute. After proper notice and pursuant to the provisions of the PUD statute and the zoning ordinance, the planning commission conducted a public hearing concerning the IEDC's application for the LEAP Lebanon Innovation PU District on July 17th at sub PM docket number 23-45, as required by Indiana law. After the public hearing was held, the planning commission considered docket 23-45, which requested an amendment to the UDO and to the zoning ordinance with regard to the LEAP district. The planning commission forwarded docket 23-45 to this council with a favorable recommendation by unanimous vote of all planning commission members in accordance with Indiana law. The secretary of the commission certified this section and forwarded it to this council. Now therefore, be it ordained that this council pursuant to Indiana Code hereby adopts this ordinance as an amendment to the official zoning map and to establish this LEAP Lebanon Innovation PUD District, or the LEAP District. All prior ordinances applicable to the LEAP District, including but not limited to the Interstate and Transportation Overlay District and parts thereof that are inconsistent are hereby inapplicable to the use and the development of the LEAP District. All prior commitments and restrictions applicable to the LEAP District shall be null and void and replaced and superseded by this ordinance, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and signing.
Thank you, Rob. Ben, did you want to respond to anything?
I just want to quickly assure the council, we have followed all noticing requirements related to public hearings for planning commission and council, notifying neighbors within 300 feet. We actually notified neighbors within 400 feet of everybody within the, of all properties within this PUD ordinance boundary, and then we additionally provide notices to the paper that was done in a timely fashion. We also, of course, posted all of the meeting agendas and meeting notes and materials on the city's website. We provided reminders on Facebook pages and social media, and actually, we even went to the Boone County Preservation Page and reminded everybody of the meeting dates as well. So we actually went above and beyond in turn of noticing. Ms. Stewart had contacted me about signage requirements. She was actually quoting the Boone County Area Plan Commission signage requirements, which are not applicable within the city. So we did follow our rules or procedure to the T, and in fact, actually did more than required. So we have made sure to provide notice in all of our public meetings as required by law, both Indiana law and our local rules of procedure for the Lebanon, City of Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission, our rules of procedure. So that's really the only thing, I just want to make sure, just assure everybody, we've doubled and triple-checked to make sure we provided all the notices as required by rules of procedure and in Indiana law.
Thank you, Ben. Any questions for Ben from council?
I do.
Let me also make another point, just to, while Ben's up here. I mean, so Ben, what happens if we don't adopt this ordinance tonight? What is the status?
If we don't adopt the ordinance, it would remain in the current zoning classification, which actually, I guess, it's, it's, I'm not sure what the zoning classification is. It would still be the LEAP zoning district that was established as part of the annexation. Now, the comprehensive plan is updated. The comprehensive plan suggests everything in this area would be part of the LEAP district development. So it's either currently zoned, single-family on the north end, or at the south end, zone LEAP zoning district. So the area in question around 032 is already zoned for LEAP uses. What this PUD ordinance does is it takes that LEAP zoning district, and it expands upon that to make sure we've got additional protections, both for the users who are looking in the area, as Mr. Alexander said, and then also additional protections for any neighbors in that area. So this ordinance is, provides a lot more detail on the things that we're trying to do, make sure that the vision for the LEAP district is realized by what the PUD ordinance outlines in much more detail than any of our zoning districts ever could.
So fair to say, this is actually, there are actually more protections in this ordinance for residents than the current zoning it has now?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. Any further questions for Ben from council?
I don't have a question. I just, I just appreciate the fact that we have a document that's non-reactionary. That's very unique in this day and time, so it kind of sets the stage forward.
Any further discussion, council? Okay. Scott or Aaron, you guys need to close or anything? Okay. This time then, I would entertain a motion concerning ordinance 2023-13.
I'll make a motion, and we approve ordinance 2023-13, the LEAP Innovation...
Can we say as amended?
As amended.
Okay. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second to approve as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? That ordinance is adopted unanimously. Thank you, council.
Thank you, council.
Okay, we'll go back on to new business now. Next item will be Resolution 2023-18, Additional Appropriations for Planning and Zoning Capital Improvements. And this is Ben, should I sit down?
So earlier this evening at the Board of Works, we did award bids for construction and furniture in the planning department office space to get us a little bit more efficient use of our space that we have now. Just a quick breakdown of those bids. We did a award bid to TD Construction, which would be for the construction components of the remodel at $128,744. And then the furniture package bid was $52,849.99. So between those two, we're somewhere in the neighborhood of about $180,000, give or take. And then we have some additional appliances that will need to be purchased for our remodeled kitchenette, that I've specked out to be approximately about $5,000. So that takes us up to approximately $185,000, $190,000. The rest of the requests that's before you tonight would be contingency for any sort of unknown things that tend to come up when you start taking down ceiling tiles and removing walls. So there's, we're expecting that we're going to find something that we didn't, couldn't have planned for when we were putting together the architectural plans. And then also some changes that may be needed to some of the furniture packages. I know we're looking at maybe doing some additional chairs in this large meeting room next door, and just making sure we can accommodate those things, but definitely looking at, with the way the bids came out, we want to make sure that we have enough contingency that we can finish the project. So that adds up to then the $225,000 questions before you here tonight for the additional appropriation from gentleman.
And also to clarify too, part of this project also creates the judges' chambers as well for the city court.
Yes.
That will be starting on January 1, 2025, 2024, excuse me.
2024.
So that's part of this package as well, too. So just wanted to clarify that for council.
Yeah, some of you may recall, the planning department has had two employees in the judge's chambers right back here for the last couple of years. So we've got one of them moved out and is over here and is in our conference room now, but we still do have one employee back there. We'll have to get relocated. Then the space out in front of the judge's chambers, which is the old clerk's office, we're going to have to tear some walls down and make some workstations out there, in addition to some work we're doing over on the planning department side. So yeah, that will set us up for the judge, starting in January. The project right now, our contractor suggests that they should be able to get it done by December, which is great. We were willing to be flexible and go into the next year if we had to, but our contractor now believes that it could all be done by January in time for the judge and city court.
Okay. Any questions for Ben on this resolution? Rob, can you read this, please?
Thank you, Mayor, council. This Resolution 2023-18 is for an additional appropriation, whereas it is the duty and responsibility of this council to maintain the fiscal integrity of the finances of the city. At times, it becomes necessary to appropriate additional funds within the approved budget. It has been determined now that it is necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in the annual budget. Whereas additional appropriations... Whereas additional appropriations require a public hearing, now therefore be it resolved, Resolution 2023-18 is to appropriate funds for planning and zoning capital improvements out of Fund 1101, the general fund, in the amount of $225,000.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Any questions for Rob, council on this? Okay, there is a public hearing. So, this time I will open the public hearing on Resolution 2023-18. If any comments concerning that resolution, please step forward, state your name for the record, and also keep comments to three minutes if possible. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on Resolution 2023-18. For discussion from council, comments? I will say, this building was built in 2004, so we're coming up on 20 years without any major remodel, so I think we did a pretty good job. But I appreciate Ben and his team of working pretty hard to put this all together to maximize the space for us and make sure we use it in an efficient manner, so we're not adding on the building, but we're maximizing our space to make sure we can continue as we continue to grow. So, with that, would entertain a resolution, or would entertain a motion concerning Resolution
Motion we approve Resolution 2023-18.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Okay. Second from Morris. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed? That is approved. Thank you, council. Okay, and next up, Resolution 2023-19, initial appropriation for, I believe this is Personnel Services, not personnel, not personnel services. Tanya?
All right, just a brief overview on this. This is different personnel services. Salary ordinance was sent to the state of Indiana. One of the salaries was mistyped by $10. So, $10 is part of the $2,510. And then, our fleet manager was overlooked in getting an increase in his salary of $2,500. So, if you look at both of those, we're at $2,510.
Yeah, that was, that was my oversight. I apologize to council on this. We just forgot to change it in my budget, so that was the issue. So, just to give you a perspective on where we are from a fleet standpoint, we have probably close to 100 city vehicles, so it's...
It's a big job.
Bill earns his keep, and I'll just say that. So, would appreciate, make sure that reflects what the increase that all the other employees got, which didn't apply that his at budget time, so.
Shall I read?
Go for it, take it away.
Questions on this so far? Okay. Whereas the city of Lebanon is duly formed municipal corporation within the state of Indiana, it's the duty and responsibility of the council to maintain fiscal integrity of the finances of the city, whereas at times it becomes necessary to appropriate additional funds within the approved budget. It has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in the annual budget. All additional appropriations require a public hearing, of which the council has served proper notice. Be it resolved and adopted by the city council as follows. Resolution 2023-19, appropriate funds of $2,500 to the fleet manager and $10 for a typographical error to a city employee. That's it?
Thank you, Tanya. For discussion for council? Okay, this time there is a public hearing on this resolution, so if you have any public comments on Resolution 2023-19, please step forward. I'll open the public hearing at this time. State your name for the record and keep comments to three minutes. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on Resolution 2023-19. Question from council? Okay. This time then, I would entertain a motion concerning, oh, sorry. We're good?
Yeah.
Okay. Would entertain a motion then concerning Resolution 2023-19?
I move we approve Resolution 2023-19.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Dick. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed? That is approved. Hold on one second here.
So, this resolution for the fire department, are you ready to give this?
Yes.
Okay. This was apparently dated August the 14th. We didn't have it on our agenda. I'm not sure why. I mean, I was told about it Friday, but I guess we can go ahead. Do you guys have it?
I didn't have it.
It was sent out prior to this meeting. I'll let Chuck explain what it is.
Was it, was it noticed for today?
Yeah, yeah. It was noticed.
Chief, you want to, I remember chief's emails about it.
Tell us about it, and then we'll...
This additional appropriation request, I sent out the information on approximately three weeks ago, maybe four.
July, yep.
To discuss the needs in the Station 11 operating line, our overtime line, and our vehicle maintenance. We're running in the deficit of our, in our overtime. That's due to a staffing shortage, and we've had some extenuating circumstances with our HVAC at Station 11. I sent each of you, at the request, excuse me, of Councilman Robertson, a detailed list of where those funds were used and all those station lines and vehicle maintenance. We also suffered catastrophic failure of the braking system in one of our oldest engines in the fleet, and it had to be replaced. With our vehicle maintenance line, we are doing a guestment each year with our budget and trying to anticipate the needs that we'll have, and sometimes we miss. And we do not like to over-budget in those lines because those are taxpayer dollars that may be unused. So, I'm asking for an additional, it's a total of $100,000, $30,000 in Station 11 overtime, $60,000, $20,000 of that will go into the deficit that we're running in, and then the third, vehicle maintenance, an additional of $10,000.
I remember emailed, talking about it. I just never saw the actual resolution. I think that may have been my issue, so, but, I mean, this, so it was noticed for tonight, though. I mean, does, is council comfortable with this tonight? Or are we, I mean, I know we've all, the information was sent out, but if you need the full...
I mean, I read what you said. Did you say you had to add something to that, that you sent out earlier?
No.
Okay.
No, everything that I sent out several weeks ago is still accurate.
Sixteen, okay. Yeah. I've read the information.
Well, if council is comfortable with it, again, it was noticed for tonight, the public hearing was, so we, even though it's not on my agenda, that's always subject to change. So, Tanya, do you want to read the resolution? It's Resolution 2023-16.
Thanks, John.
Okay.
Whereas the city of Lebanon is duly formed municipal corporation within the state of Indiana, it's the duty and responsibility of the council to maintain fiscal integrity of the finances of the city, whereas at times it becomes necessary to appropriate additional funds within the approved budget as contemplated and authorized under Indiana Code. It has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in the annual budget. All additional appropriations require public hearing, of which the council has served proper notice. Therefore, it is resolved and adopted by the city council as follows.
Okay.
$30,000 for O and M, operation maintenance, overtime, and 10 for the vehicle. $100,000.
And that's all from the Fund 1101, so general fund.
Right, it's general fund.
Okay. Public hearing. So, this time I'll open the public hearing on Resolution 2023-16. If you have public comments concerning this resolution, please step forward, state your name for the record, and keep comments to three minutes if possible. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on Resolution 2023-16. Any additional discussion, comments for council? Would you entertain a motion?
What's that number again?
16.
2023-16.
16, okay.
Yep.
I'll make a motion, we approve Resolution 2023-16, additional appropriations there for the fire department.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Morris. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed? That is approved. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Again, sorry, chief, about that. Okay, that concludes what I have for new business, is anything from council? Any announcements or discussion? Move on to claims? Would you entertain a motion concerning the claims?
Make a motion, we pay the claims.
Motion to pay the claims. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Sierra. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed? Okay. Would entertain a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second from John. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed? All right, our next city council meeting will be Monday, August 28th at 7:15 PM. We are adjourned.